Yeah, it'll leave them straight.
That's why I say I'm waiting for the logistical.
Yeah.
Okay, the microphones are on.
Microphones are on.
Just checking. Maybe they shouldn't be on.
Okay.
Um, where's all the green, gentlemen and lady? Oh, in your mind?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Alright, six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Um, public comment? If you have a public, if you're gonna have a comment, come to the podium, state your name and address, press your comments to the board and not to the audience, and you have three minutes. No fakers? Alright. New business. Um, appoint a select board chair and vice chair. Any appointments?
Nomination is probably his chair.
Do I have a second? A second myself, I guess. Oh!
Is that real, Denise?
It is, but it says the wrong title. Oh, no, it doesn't.
Okay. It's good. What is your title?
There you go. Thank you.
Hey! Alright. We have a moment. I'll clear up. Oh, I can assign two. That's the legal rate at the moment, because we haven't ordered yet.
Well, I can just do this.
Okay. Operating on the assumption. So we have nomination and a second. Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes. Um, vice chair. Uh, I would like to nominate Mr. LaCorte as vice chair.
My second.
Any other nominations? No? Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. John.
Congratulations. Mr. Stroud? Illegal.
Next. We visit board committee and commission representatives. Rebecca was on the planning board, and you were already on the planning board, John. I would assume you would like to continue.
I'd like to stay on the planning board.
So I assume that opens up a position that he held.
It will open up the planning board position he held.
Okay.
Correct. I know there's two alternates already that could be.
To fill those positions.
Yeah.
Do you have, what else was Rebecca on? I don't remember.
Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Is that something that you're interested, Mr. John? I don't know.
I've got a question, though.
Go ahead.
What committees and boards are required by law?
Paris Commission is one, planning board is one.
I believe Conservation Commission, I don't know that that is required. Budget Committee is.
Okay.
The reason I bring it up, I mean, I know it's like a liaison of these committees, but the planning board is quite a lot on its own basic.
Mm-hmm.
In reality, even though we're tied to a board, we don't always go all the meetings, just can't do them all. So I just wondered if the ones that are required by law, we should stick with, the other ones maybe, is it still necessary? So I'm just putting it down on the floor for discussion.
Um, well, I don't mind attending the ones I've already signed up for. I do the ABC. What else do I do?
Conservation.
I'm sorry?
Conservation.
Conservation. Is that it? Seems like I do too much.
Yes, I'm just joking. It's up to you.
I don't mind continuing those. Um, but yeah, it's a good thing in terms of the other boards to get, you know, feedback from them, what's happening, vice versa. One of the things we used to do is ask each of the committees and commissions for a quarterly report.
Yes.
That might be helpful.
Yeah, I would appreciate that.
So maybe we can ask those particular groups to give us one of those. I know the Conservation Commission does monthly, they have monthly stuff that they send in, so maybe they're already covered, but maybe that can be shared with the board, too. It's always good to know what everybody's doing.
Of course, I agree.
So maybe, Andy, could we ask committees and commissions to give quarterly updates with what's happening?
Yes. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Alright. Anything else we do business?
I will double-check on what is statutorily required for the select board.
Thank you.
If we're missing anything, let you know.
Okay. Alright. Um, so do we need to do anything official to appoint John? No? Just to tell him?
He's already on the board, so.
John, you're already, you're.
You could make a motion to appoint him if you wanted to.
You don't wanna make Karen that, do you?
Uh, no, but, you know. Um, so if you can let the planning board know that we've done that, and then they have another slot that's open, so. Alright, appointments.
Actually, two slots.
Oh, they have two slots? Okay.
Dave, it's you that'll hold it down.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Steve.
Well, which one do you want to do first?
Whichever one you want to do.
Do the easy one first. The furnace from the library that went bad, that's on there, that has been given the okay or go ahead to do, and then we got it done, we're just waiting to actually get the invoice from the company, so like to take the emergency replacement of the furnace out of the building, capital reserve fund.
Any questions for Steve?
I came back at quite a bit less than.
Definitely thought it was gonna be.
Steve's first estimate, he got so.
So did they actually replace the unit, or what did they actually do?
No, the whole thing got replaced.
Okay. And this is the one that's in the expansion in the back?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah.
Any questions for Steve?
No, I think it's good.
All set. So I move to authorize withdrawal of, the withdrawal of an amount not to exceed $5,155 for the town building's capital reserve fund in order to pay Thermo Dynamics Incorporated for the furnace replacement fully lifetime. Right, a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Alright, so the transfer station currently is not fire-protected. We had multiple breaks beginning of February again. Uh, we're averaging two breaks a year, probably, at this point, and we're spending down in the back. So one side is, um, what I paid, and then the other side, we have bought the materials and had lifts on-site, did it ourselves, so that's pretty much the money we saved doing it ourselves, but the, it's starting to get multiple times a year, so if you want us to fix the ones that are there, that's fine. I didn't wanna put, try to put an RFP out and do all that work and get the two companies that are probably gonna bid on it to come in and waste their time if it wasn't something the board was remotely interested in trying to do. So I can fix the two breaks that are there, and then I'll probably get two more again in the summertime, or we go out and see what we get, and then we make a decision, because I have really no idea how much this is gonna cost.
So the pipe that was used was not thick enough?
No, all the main lines are scheduled 10. The upgrades that go to the actual sprinklers are off 40. So it's 20 years old, and it's just putting pinhole leaks out everywhere. The last time it broke, it caused the pump to kick on and flood the system, and then water all over every place, and the fire department had to go for a fire alarm activation.
Okay.
So.
But you have no idea how much to fix that?
I mean, I gassed on a, on a financial planning tool thing, but that was, that was a guess.
Do you remember how much that was?
Eighteen thousand?
And the way I got that number was, it costs this much to do a 20-foot section of pipe, and we kinda just took a wheel and tried to extrapolate out the, the distance for that amount of pipe to get that, but, you know. And most of the money in those, each of those things is the lift, because they're essentially renting a lift, but you have to rent it for a whole day, and they're renting it for two hours to come do a job.
Okay.
Which is why we started by John, where I let us use his the last time, so we've, people have helped us to try to save some money, but.
Okay. Thoughts?
Get to the point.
If you replace one piece, and then all of a sudden it's just gonna break the next line down, it's kinda crazy. I think you should go for a bit, just get it done.
Dave, you okay? Okay. Alright, so do an RFP to the two-plus companies or whatever you can buy.
And I'll put it out, but I don't know, have any more than the two that.
Okay.
The one that put it in, and then the one that's currently doing the services on it now. Would be the only two I know of that would put in for it.
And also, when you're doing the RFP, find out approximately how much time it's gonna take them. I assume they could probably do it in a day or two, or?
Well, my hope is it's just replacing kinds, so all the hangers that are there, there's nothing wrong with it, just take the pipe out, put pipe back in, and.
So maybe you could schedule on two Cs or three Cs, or whatever's given.
That's what the hope would be.
Okay. Fair enough.
Good.
Yep.
And then.
Do you need a motion on that, Andy, or not?
Um, I don't know that it's required, because it's not an expenditure. We could certainly make one to make it clear.
Alright. I move to approve putting in an RFP for the new sprinkling system at the transfer station. You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, Steve.
So the current F-450 is, it's 10 years old, which is when, historically, the highway departments replaced their vehicles. Um, I tried to, I was trying to rack my brain, but I think I probably tried to push it off a year at the time, but it's because I thought the state bid extended another year. The current bid in these prices end in September, and then everything's going up, it always has. And so that's why we brought him, just trying to catch the bid that was put in in 2021, or sorry, 2022.
We had it scheduled in the financial planning tool for '26, so could you wait until after July 1st?
I wouldn't even get it till July 1st.
Okay. Alright.
Um, I would order it tomorrow, and it's eight weeks before you even see it.
Okay.
So I can push it and not make sure I don't get it till July 1st.
Okay.
Um, and the, we got 15,000 in trade for the, the red truck, which if we'd waited longer, that obviously would've gone down. And this is all state bids, so it's, we went off the state contract for everything.
Okay. Questions for Steve?
Go ahead.
Dave, anything? No?
Can you vote?
Okay. Are you okay if we wait until July 1st?
Yes.
Um, let's see. Move to grant the Public Works Director permission to enter into two contracts. First contract to purchase a new F-550 cabin chassis from Rink 4, for an amount not to exceed $52,619. Second contract to purchase a new dump body and related equipment from Donovan Equipment, for an amount not to exceed $25,550. Set funds to come from the Highway Department, Highway Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, and not to be expended before July 1st, 2025. Uh, second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes.
Um, the second grant truck came, uh, a week and a half ago. So we have to scrap the other two, have everything to submit reimbursement, and then once I do that, we'll get the 400.
Thousand, yeah.
Yeah, 467,000 dollars back from the state.
So what do you do to get rid of the current ones that you're?
To bring them to Harding's, and they have to cut the frames in half.
Oh, okay.
Poke holes in the engines.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then the total cost for that, for the two trucks, the taxpayer should be 97, which is.
Pretty good.
Yeah, considering each one's about 250,000, so.
Now, are they yellow or red, or what color?
Yellow. We just, both of the ones that were getting rid of were yellow, so it would just be yellow.
Okay. Fair enough.
Thank you.
Chief Johnson.
Um, Kyle Dowd is gonna be here. This is kinda more of a medical thing, but I can talk to it. Um, we were approached by a young lady from UNH. She's actually a resident in town. There's this naloxone project they've got. They're trying to get it stationed throughout the state at state public safety buildings and whatnot to make it available to general public. And that happens in two ways. One is, the fire department will be given naloxone kits. If we go to a med aid call, that's an overdose, they will offer the people at the house a free kit or two. Uh, the second part of that is, there'll be a box here at the station, um, almost like an AED box, that will have a naloxone kit in it. So if somebody's in a vehicle, because we do have numerous overdoses in a vehicle, usually the passenger, they'd be able to come here, come in, grab the kit, and then the fire department will replenish it. Uh, there's no cost to the, to the town at all, everything's provided to us. Um, the part of this that I came up with is, our drug take-back box, ever since we got it, I always thought it should be inside. Um, we keep putting signs up, because we have people putting everything that they're not supposed to. Uh, the, the worst part is sharps, needles. And, you know, when the sergeant goes in to clean it out, he's gonna be so careful, but they're putting denture grip, cough medicine, it's nothing that's a narcotic. Um, and we made signs up with the weather, just ruins them at the time. So in looking at the front entranceway, there's plenty of room, I'm gonna move our display case just down a little to the left, and everything can go right here. Steve and the guys came in, and they'll be able to take the front doors and put them inside, and vice versa, because the doors obviously would need to be accessible 24/7. And then naloxone actually needs to be in climate control. Um, so that's what we're looking to hopefully do. So it's, I figured I'd let you, the board know, because there's gonna be some change to the physical facility by changing the doors. Um, but Steve seems to think that they can just swap the two sets of doors.
Is there video on that particular?
Yes, there is. Yeah, so as soon as you walk in, the outer doors, before you get to the second set of doors right above you is a camera.
So the only thing I'd be worried about is somebody breaking in and breaking into the display cabinet and.
Yep.
Destroying it.
Yeah.
And also, there's a, what is there? There's a vending machine there and.
Yeah, and this, that was discussed with the fire chief. Um, he's the one who set this all up, and so they're, because one of the concerns was the fire panel, but that's under, that's locked. Um, and he's not worried about, yeah, I'm, I'd be very surprised if somebody came into a police department to cause damage, um, but it would all be on camera, inside and outside, yeah.
Thoughts, gentlemen?
Want a clarification? Is this open 24 hours a day, the front doors?
No, not now.
I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, they are not.
When you install this cabinet?
The front doors will be.
Will be.
You won't be able to get into the actual building, just be in the front hallway.
Alright, so the second set of doors will always be locked, or you got a key?
Yeah, and if you go to the majority of the police departments, the safety complexes that have a drug take-back box, it is inside.
Yes. And the glass cabinet, you said it's still gonna be there?
We can, unless we can find another place for it, but I, I think it could stay there.
Yeah. No, I think it's a good idea.
Dave, thoughts? Anything you want to say? Okay. Alright.
You know, we could actually, thinking about it, frame off in front of that glass case with some plexiglass to give it a little extra layer of protection if that gives some comfort.
Well, how about, how if we try it and see what happens? If we have a problem?
We'll address it.
Can we visit it? Okay. Alright. So I move to authorize the police chief to, wow, ooh, but we're not removing the display case, though, right?
No.
Nope.
So I moved the, ooh, I moved to authorize the police chief to install the Narcan distribution area, ooh, in the vestibule, and for the Public Works Director to change the doors.
Yes.
Okay. And then the inside doors, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Um, so the inside doors will come out?
Correct.
Okay, cool. Alright, alright. Alright. Any other discussion? No? All set? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next. Andy?
Yes, the first item I had was, basically, housekeeping. Um, Coppel House Farm is having a snip and clip event this summer. They've hired a caterer who is bringing a mobile bar to their flower garden, and the caterer is following the letter of the law and requesting some notification that the select board is okay with them having someone serving alcohol at the event. That actually is a select board power that is supposed to be exercised, so. I, I didn't have anything beyond her email. Uh, I did check the couple, with Coppel House Farm, and it is on their, um, scheduled events. I told her I would bring it to the board.
So they're responsible for making sure everybody is of age and?
Yes, and they do have, um, they are appropriately licensed and, um, have a, she has an official catering business, it's not just sort of booze on wheels, but.
Who's on this? Chief Johnson?
This is the, not the first event where they've served alcohol, they've done events with the Flag Hill Winery, and it's never been an issue there. Uh, they've submitted their assembly permit and, uh, sketch and what they're gonna have with the fire department, and I know that he's okayed it, um, so just.
Will there be an officer there doing traffic?
No, it's not that big an event.
Okay.
Yeah.
And these are pre-ticketed, um.
So what is the event, is it?
You come, uh, collect flowers, you make a bouquet.
Okay. So it's not just come and drink and have a good time and?
No, you can, I think essentially, they're looking to have sort of gourmet cocktails or a glass of wine while you walk into flower gardens.
Understood. Okay. Someplace here.
Yeah, um, on the IT disaster plan, um, per the discussion that we had in non-public, I had, oh, I'm sorry.
Do we have to prove this?
Uh, you, I'm, I have to get ahead of myself. You, you probably should make some motion or indicate that you approve, and I can send her a letter.
Alright, so I move to approve having bar services at Coppel House Farm for the event on August 15th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Great. I'll send her a letter. Um, with regard to the IT disaster plan that we talked about in the public, um, I made the changes that we discussed, which was essentially adding the select board, and that's on page seven, and I would notify the chairman of the select board, um, at the same time I.
I see it as step six, but what's page?
No, I'm.
Where's page seven?
It should, I think that's the actual page in, and it's step six of that.
Oh, 'cause it's on page one, two, three, four.
Ah.
Is it on seven, two? I didn't see it on seven.
No, it's, it's, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Okay, it's number six on that. Okay.
Yeah, that's the only place I saw it.
Steps of.
Yep. I was the only concern I had. Everybody was notified with the select board. Sometimes that's not good, so.
I can assure you that if we were in that situation, I would notify the select board immediately, but I'll.
Sounds good.
Okay, so if the board is okay with that, I will go ahead and incorporate that into our.
Yep. I was fine with that. You.
Essentially, I haven't read it yet. So I'm gonna move the table so I get a chance to read it.
Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay, essentially, this was a, an audit finding, uh, it's been a multi-year audit finding, and, uh, as I explained to the board last week, because we're a managed platform and a managed system, a lot of the standard template for municipal IT disaster plans don't really apply to our internal structure, but the audit team would really like to see one, so I used our insurer, Primex's, uh, municipality template, and, uh, sort of simplified the beginning of the process with contacts and steps to go through, um, in the event that something happens.
Send me a copy so I can take a look at it.
Absolutely, and you should have received a copy with the agenda.
I'm not sure I did, so.
Most likely.
Most likely.
Do you wanna hard copy, John?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll be easy, thank you. Then we can take care of it next time.
Okay. So put it on the agenda for the next time?
Yeah, I'll put that on again. Um, audit policy plan, uh, a little bit dismayed as I went through some of the audit findings. Um, some of the policies that they found lacking, we actually have in place, um, they could probably be improved. Um, some of the things, uh, that they suggested, conflict of interest policy, um, this is typically more of an elected official policy than a personnel, um, matter. They said we should have one for personnel and elected officials. Um, we do have, uh, some discussion in protocol for the select board about that. Uh, I'll divide those out, um, and, and make sure that we have two very specific and easy-to-identify conflict of interest policies. Uh, the ethics policy finding, um, again, that's usually an elected official policy, not so much personnel. We have, um, a section of the personnel policy right now that mentions ethics, but I will put together a specific, uh, policy that's a standalone ethics policy, uh, and I, I think we'll probably need a version for the elected officials and personnel, and I'm not sure that, my recollection is, the elected official ethics policy probably needs to go on the warrant next year and be accepted, um, by the voters. Um, it's not quite as easy as the other policies. Financial policy additions, um, I'm going to revamp our capital assets policy, um, we have a payroll policy, I'll go through that, make sure it's up to date. Um, we have an employee reimbursement policy, which, again, I will make sure stands out to the auditors, and, uh, financial close and reporting policy, um, which is a fairly standard, uh, thing I can plug in. These have never been brought up, other than the IT plan in prior years, but for some reason this year that was a hot button, so I'll be bringing those policies to the board in the next few weeks. And I'll, and I'll do a draft ethics policy, but as I've said, I believe that's gonna have to go on the warrant to be accepted for the town. Um, miscellaneous, I did not really have anything in miscellaneous, uh, other than, I'm throwing in with the signatures, the short version of the warrant for DRA. Um, we type out the warrant in long form when we post it, you sign it, Denise, uh, notarized it, and we posted it. The DRA does not like our form on the long pages, they insist that I send them their form, so. Okay. Questions for me?
Um, audit is up, right? We should go up to bid?
Yes, we should.
So specifically, I think you and I talked about, you need to put some language in there that they need to have it to us in a certain time period. This last year was unacceptable and, and do you know this?
The last, the last two years have been unacceptable with regard to the timeline.
So I don't know if you can check with some of your counterparts in different towns and see what they have maybe in terms of, you know, is there a reduction in price, is there some kind of penalty? What's the consequence for them not doing it in time and fashion? And I can understand if it was our fault, but I don't think this year was our fault.
No, I don't either.
So maybe if you can do that, that would be great.
I will, and we had similar language that was used in the last revale in two thousand twenty, which we will also need to be, despite the fact that the foreign article failed, we will need to be looking at revale companies this year going forward.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that didn't pass, if they figured out, oh, if you don't give money for a revale, we can't change our assessments and that's not how that works, but I don't know, we'll see. The other thing I had for you is we've switched over to TD, are we working on it still?
We are pretty much switched over to TD. In fact, I made deposits for the tax collector town clerk's office today. We've received our first digital check reader, there was supposed to be two digital check readers, which we received months ago and were told not to open the box until we were ready to install it. So when we got together with the install team and opened the box, there was only one check reader in the box, so. The bookkeeper's office is set up with a digital check reader now, we can deposit checks directly from the office on a daily basis. Linda will be set up this week. The only drawback we had was in setting up all the subaccounts we have, we had made arrangements to set those up and didn't get them funded before TD Bank's policies. If you don't fund them within thirty days, they dump the accounts and you have to reset them up. We apparently funded them in the thirty-first or thirty-second day and they rescinded. So we've reset them back up and I am greatly looking forward to having those active. Those should be active as of this Thursday. And then I will be able to give a precise and easy accounting for things like the heritage commission, the conservation commission, that type of thing, when they call and wanna know what they've got in their accounts, which. Previously, they've been in one master account and it's been up to us to sort them out.
So there's also some paperwork we're gonna have to sign?
I believe we are all set at this point.
Because I haven't signed any.
Just as an account holder, you may, although I provided your names to Keith, and he, they may have been able to set that up with the treasury signature. Because I know Ben came in and signed a bunch of paperwork as a treasurer and that authorized Linda, myself and Taylor to access bank statements, make deposits, that sort of thing, but I'll double check for the board members.
Okay, sounds good.
I had a couple of things that, you know, the sign that sit out there memorial people that says, you know, thank you for being a volunteer.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's all faded and everything, can we get it replaced or something?
I don't know, that was back in Carol Dennis's time.
You know, tar and bone?
Is this the up by the school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all faded and.
Okay.
You know, take it down or we, it's painted or what is it, it's metal or?
I can check and see if it's vinyl or if it's painted.
So did we pay for that or did she pay for that? I don't, I remember it was her initiative.
Uh, I believe the town paid for it.
Yeah, the second thing is, I wanna talk about the advisory budget committee. You think it's prudent for you to sit on it? It's not a personal attack, it's just something where the, I meant when this committee came involved, it was an independent organization for a group of people, look at it independently, without separation between board selection and advisory budget committee. And I think it stood well, but then they were truly separate, then I met when I was either chairman or part of the board. We said, why have two different presentations? Why not have the same presentation all at once and we both hear the same thing? So you being on there, you're taking the place of somebody else that could be on there with another independent mind. But I'm just looking into it, you see what my concern is?
Yeah, so two things, one, when we do the meeting and we talk about things.
Yes.
Usually I'm providing information, I usually don't come out and say, okay, we need to get rid of this or add this. I let them have the conversation and when it comes to a vote, I do vote. But I'm not in there politicking one way or the other, I'm usually, they ask questions about what about this and I give them information. I don't tell them, well, we shouldn't be doing this or we should be doing this. I kind of step back a little bit. So basically, I'm trying to be the selectman's representative, but not interfere with the process, so. But yeah, I'm very particular about that too, because.
Well, just, when I saw you on the, you know, going for the vote at this point, I'm going, what the hell was he doing there? Put it one way.
Yeah, so, but yeah, it's hard to get people, there's.
I know that.
Two slots open, I think there's two.
There are, and I think one way you could do around that, and the board had discussed it a few months ago, was if Selectman Bugby is the select board representative, the board or the budget committee could appoint somebody to fill in the position you ran for. Because obviously they're not gonna give you two seats and two yes, so.
And they don't, and they don't, so. But yeah, I'm very particular about that, because yes, that's an independent voice, so. But yeah, I don't try to sway them, it's usually answering their questions about, you know, about this particular thing or how do we do this? And I don't really try to sway them one way or the other. Sometimes I agree with them, sometimes I don't.
Of course, I guess if there were people climbing, getting on there and you were taking your spot.
Yes, that would be different.
Different issue, right, at this point.
Different, because right now, I think there's one, I think it's one seat, I think.
There's a year one, right, then there's three years, right?
Yeah, so Tom and I got voted back in, but there was three for that particular thing, so that one plus the one-year one, so. Yeah, so, and I don't see anybody banging down Denise's door to say, let me on the ABC right now, so.
So if someone does bang on your door.
Well, if three people bang on my door, we'll have to revisit it, but we still have to get two seats.
I understand.
I think you could reappoint, not reappoint, but appoint somebody, because technically, I mean, you're running, but you've just been nominated as the select board representative and you can't have both of those positions, that's incompatible by statute, so.
So, did we find out from Linda or Mrs. Brown, was anybody had enough write-in votes for those? You know, Linda said she's checking into people, but I don't know if that's one of the ones.
There were, there was one person who had enough write-in votes for the advisory budget committee and trustees of the trust funds. I don't know whether he's accepting either or or not.
Yeah, it's hard, lately it's hard to get people.
Oh, I understand, I just wanted to put that on the table, just so you know my position at this point.
That's fine, that's fine. Anything else?
No.
Even anything else?
I'll check any of the side.
No. All right, consent agenda, everybody okay with everything that's on it?
Just a comment, how long would Linda be staying on to support?
Andy probably has more information, but I think it's like August or something like that? Well, I thought we put money in for state dollars.
We do, and I, I think, you know, what they're gonna have to sort out is whether, to my mind and Linda's mind, Mrs. Brown would step in as town clerk, Linda would move to deputy for.
A period of time.
Yeah, whatever that period of time is, I think, as long as Linda can stand and still be in the office. And whether there's an assistant there or not at that point, too.
How long does Mrs. Brown have to get?
She has.
I don't know, certified, though.
The law states that you have to notify the candidate and they are supposed to report to you within six days of notification. If they report to you that they can't fill a position within six days or come to get sworn in within six days, they have thirty days before they have to do that. And because the candidate that was elected has a professional job, she wanted to be able to give her employer a couple of weeks' notice and I believe she.
She starts learning to be seven.
Right, she gave the town clerk a date of April seventh that she will be in.
So after she starts, can she do everything Linda can do now or not? She can't.
No, there's, there's some training and some state certification that has to happen.
Because we put money in for Linda to stay, to cover.
And Linda is planning on staying, I just don't know exactly how long she's planning on staying.
Maybe at the next meeting you can let us know?
Yep, I can find out if she's gonna drop that date.
Yep, okay, all right. All right, so we okay with consent, Jen?
Yes.
All right, so I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And motion passes.
There is the paperwork and I've got the manifest paperwork as well as Scott reviewed earlier.
And will Denise update our sheets at the transfer station in the public safety facility? You're just passing them all through.
Yeah, that was before my turn. Yeah, I wanna take credit for that, yeah.
Credit, I'm gonna blame.
You can look at.
It's a blame. You got the rest of it? Wait, I already signed this. Did I miss one? There's two of them.
Oh, you already signed those two?
Yeah, almost there. Back to you.
Thank you.
Nothing in old business?
I can sign this one too.
Nothing in old business, I assume? Non-public, we got an A and can we have an L too?
Uh, yes.
And the tax.
And Denise has the tax information too, so probably an A, a C and an L.
An A, a C and an L, okay.
ECL.
Make sure we don't blow that out, so.
Already did.
Too much information. I moved into non-public session norm for RSA ninety-one dash A, going three, Roman numeral two, A and C and L. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. LeCorse?
Aye.
Mr. Bugby, yes, motion passes?
Morgan was starting with the deed list.
Is she gonna be quick?
Do you have a lot?
No.
Okay. If you don't, we can start with Tom.
Yeah, you can start with Tom, go ahead.
That was my only concern, because you have to stay anyway, so.
Yep.
All right, give us a few minutes?
He asked to give him a few minutes. He's asked to give him a few minutes.
No.
Is that right?
No.
Who's that? I'm looking at it, do I?
I can imagine. I can imagine.
Are we back on?
We are.
So I moved to seal the non-public minutes.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, a couple of...
Mr. Benson.
Aye. Mr. Legoris.
Aye.
Mr. Ludbys. Yes, motion passes. Anything else?
One other thing. I'm a member of this board a long time, a member of the downstairs planning board. Can we get some damn decent chairs around here in the planning board section?
For downstairs?
Yes. The chairs are horrible. These are not bad. The ones downstairs are horrible. I'm not looking you, Denise.
We can check the transfer station. Where most of our office furniture's come from. Except these chairs.
I mean, the ones... You do know downstairs what I'm talking about.
Yes.
They're pitiful. Yeah. We're losing members because the chairs are terrible.
I can get some estimates on chair replacements.
Could you do that? See if we can find some money. I don't know how many you would recognize.
Yeah, these, I don't know.
This one has got a shot, this one. You have new ones over there, right?
So I don't know in terms of who...
These are all the same age and the same long skin.
They have sales at Staples and stuff like $100 apiece.
There's a couple of... And actually, we just got the code enforcement officer new chair. Very similar to these at bargain rates, so...
There used to be in Brentwood, there used to be a used office supply store. The third turn.
Yeah.
Do you remember that?
Yes, I do.
No, but it's still there.
I can check. There's a couple of them.
Yeah. I don't remember where it is. Some 125 someplace.
I remember where it is. It was in Brentwood. And there's also, I don't know if the one in Portsmouth is still open. There used to be a large one downtown Portsmouth too that had decent prices.
I think you'd make a lot of people happy with the new chairs. They'll give us some good bucks and we have to deal some real issues down there.
Well, then there'd be a flurry of bad chairs at the transfer station and the swap shop, so... Oh, that was the only question. Can you... I forgot to ask Steve. I was in the transfer station Saturday and I was talking to Joe. And he was talking about the generator only runs the lights. I thought we had one set up so that it could run stuff. Because remember years ago, we had that power failure. We had lines down or something and we couldn't take trash because the compactors wouldn't work. So I thought we had that set up so we could run more than just lights.
Can I can find out?
Because if we have another little sessions, I remember it was December, probably too many years ago, that we were down for like 10, 11 days and we couldn't... We couldn't compact any trash. It kind of sat there at the floor and that's not good, so... But maybe I misunderstood what Joe was saying. But he said, you know, the light was... The power was out and they were able to run the lights. But he said they weren't able to do the compactors. So just, I don't know.
We had discussed earlier about having different committees come in and give a small presentation on a quarterly basis, but let's not all jam them all together.
You want them to come in or just do a report?
I'd like to have them come in.
Okay.
In case we have questions. I mean, 15 minutes at best. Not a big picture show.
Anything else? John, Dave, all set? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We got it.